Only logical decision needs to be replaced or repaired the trophies and display them again proudly. All other suggestions or ideas is just smoke and mirrors diverting attention from the heart of the matter. School property was destroyed and needs to be repaired or replaced. We owe Coach Bradshaw and the other coaches over the years for all that they have done for the community's school students and players and making this a great place to work and live over thirty odd years. That is the least you must do to show respect and honor them for their continued commitment, dedication, sacrifice for players, students, and the community.
Shelley?
I'm Shelley Holland. I taught here for eighteen years and my kids go to, our kids go to school there. They'll be fourth generation graduates. I don't think there's anyone in this room who hasn't made a mistake. If you just stood up and said, "I'm sorry, how can I make it right?" But you didn't. If my kids come to your office now, you're gonna hold them accountable for their actions. I will lock you out of that office. If you're not held to the same standards that our students are, it's a sad situation. An apology, that's what these people want, and you haven't given it. You've made story after story after story, and it's unacceptable. That's what I've gotten.
Thank you, Shelley. Would anybody else like to say anything to this guy? Okay, no more apologies. Okay, yeah.
I know I was talked to last spring, and I gave suggestions on what we could do with them. That was it. I asked a certain individual that's at your table to look at what Charlotte did and how simple it is to put a layer up there and set the trophy on it and go along with it. Do we have a picture of that? That was also probably two weeks ago. I have not yet, but that's where the discussion of building the trophy wall committee. Who is the committee? It hasn't been determined yet.
That's why we listed that tonight. We've got a situation here, so we're gonna look for a way to remedy it. That's why we put it on here as a trophy wall committee to try to see if we can get some people together, some public people here interested, we can get several people wanting to get in there, form a committee, get some ideas and see what we can do.
I don't think it has to be a very large committee. I think we understand what house committee does.
Well, I don't think, we sure don't need fifteen people on there.
No, I think about three could do it. Because I know three people that we put up, most of them trophies ourselves. Because we didn't have janitors that wanted to do it at the time. And then they got back down, we put them back up because we wanted to realign them. I had my class take them down last spring. We were gonna paint the walls and redo everything. I'm done.
Thanks, Jim.
Daisy, if we do replace these trophies, who's gonna pay for it?
Well, I think that's something we'll decide, because we'll get a committee here, see what we come up with.
Do you have any suggestions on moving any committee or?
Oh, we thought we'd just see what the public, some of the public wants to be on there. Get the public members and staff members and coaches, some of the coaches, you know. We're open to, we're open to suggestions on that. That's what, that's why we put it this way and said we're not, intent of this was not to let anybody, I know there's people all upset over, everything like that. I have my thoughts on it too, you know, but everybody, they're gonna run this civilly and.
How are we gonna track where the trophies are gone?
Well, that's something that I thought about, what we'll have to do. The only way I see to do it, we just gotta go back to and take an inventory. In fact, that would take, before years ago, when past superintendents, anybody's here, we'll see what we got. What all has been awarded to the school, and we just have to go back and check the list off and see what we got.
Some of the rumors are too, that the communities here, and some of them are taken home by staff members.
I've heard probably pretty much all the rumors. I couldn't tell you, you know.
Nobody knows who, and that's where.
So we don't even know where the trophies are?
No, and that's where the determination is, is, I mean, I know I've heard the rumors, I know people have blamed me for throwing. I haven't thrown any, any of the trophies away. I mean, that's where it needs to go to find out exactly how many years over the years trophies have been worn, and trying to display it or regenerate or do whatever to get them all up. And that's part of, you know, Shelley, you asked. I am sorry, everybody is extremely upset, and my intention was not to upset everybody. My intention is trying to put the whole history of drumming up. And I mean, I know there's been talk of, well, third place, no one is taking down or shouldn't go up. My opinion with who?
Well, I've heard nobody talked about any of this.
Well, I've heard the stories, the people involved. The people involved, I guess, I, I mean, that's where, do you wanna explain what you said, how the trophies were put up or what was taken down? I don't want to determine what goes up, what goes down.
See, we, there's been the talk though, like trophies were in boxes. Well, the trophies that were in boxes were the ones that when we originally took the trophies up there, were the third place district trophies, we decided that was too many trophies.
Who decided that?
Huh?
Who decided that?
The coaches were, we were talking about space. Hey, let's not take the third place trophies up or conference championship trophies up. Then there was, then there's been the discussion that the trophies were rotated. They've never been rotated. I mean, it's just the thing after, the bottom line is, there's all those stories going around, but the bottom line is, we want the trophies back and, and some of us need to be part of the solution going forward. And I've asked to be on, I've asked that, you know, gone, you know, many times. And I've asked to be part of this, part of things going forward, and I just, nobody ever comes and says anything to you. You don't know what's going on. I'll say, see this on the board agenda.
All right, now, I have something I wanna say here too. You know, we're really lucky here to have the sports history and success that we do. There's a lot of other schools, the state, that probably wish they had this problem. You know, we've been fortunate enough, we have really good athletes and good coaches come out of this school, win stuff. First and foremost, we're here to educate these kids. The education is the number one thing that we're here for. I mean, the sports is secondary. Don't get me wrong, I'm all for sports. I like it. I played it myself in school. I have kids in it. But our number one focus here is, when these kids get out of here, they got an education, so they can get out, get into college or go to work. When you get out of this school, when you get to your home, you walk out the door, you go to like your first job, the first question isn't out of their mouth is, well, you were the high school track star, were you the high school basketball star? That's not the first word out of their mouth. But, we got good, we got a situation here. It was in some past meetings, it was mentioned, Brian kinda mentioned, we were gonna have some trophies room in the past and this is the board. We kinda took it, we thought, well, we'll, something we're gonna have to deal with here down the road. We didn't, you know, we didn't tell Brian, "Go ahead and do it," or we didn't vote on it or anything like that. We knew somewhere down the road that we had other issues. But I'm saying, Brian's behalf, I, I don't see where he did anything maliciously or any bad intentions in mind. So it wasn't, whatever, what he did or put them up, he had good intentions in mind there. And to me, it makes, what he did there was, makes sense to me where you can, other than having some trophies, you know, over in this corner or over there or something, if you could kinda have, get a bunch of them there, we could kinda have them all consolidated. You know, when people walk in somewhere, they could kinda see them, but his idea, it sounds credible to me, you know, what he did. And I'm not trying to take away from each individual trophy, but I wanna say that I don't think Brian had any bad intentions of, you know, what he tried to do there. And in, looking back, respecting others, it should've been put on the agenda and the old public input, you know. Should've been handled differently.
But if the trophies, you wanna find a way to just, to display the trophies, tearing them apart and destroying them's not the way to do it though. I don't get that part. I, I'll never comprehend that. I don't care. I could have five thousand people come to me and say, just try to justify that, and I just can't get past it. Maybe it's just me, but.
No, it's not his issue.
I mean, I, that's the part that I'm so frustrated with, is just that it was done and nobody was told. That we're involved, most, most of the people who are involved with those trophies, nobody was told. It was done in the summer. Okay, so nobody knew, and still not, still, I still know what's going on. And it just, that's the frustrating part, not being told and then taking them and making them into shop projects. I just don't get that part. So, I under, you know, that part I don't get, if you're gonna display a hundred and sixty trophies, then that's what should be, should've been done. I don't see why, how taking them away is gonna make things better looking.
You know, I know what you mean by saying taken away, Mike, and people talk, destroyed. You know, basically the parts and pieces are.
If you make a trophy, I hold up a divisional first place trophy and it's made into a table, what part is not, I don't get what part that's not destroyed. I mean, what do you have?
You know, in talk, you talk about, I've tried to talk to as many students or athletes, I guess, I could find here in the last, since this happened, that I can hold up wrong boards and stuff. And I can honestly say that pretty much, I, everyone I could find and talk to, I said, "What do you think of the deal there? What's going on with that?" And once they've kinda found what's going on, pretty much everybody I can say, everyone I've talked to.
What kind of connection do they have? No, well, what kind of connection do they have to it though?
Their names on, they won, they were on the, part of the team that won it, you know, as long as this stuff's still there.
You've talked to, I've talked to a lot of other people. I had fifty-two people. Players get ahold of me.
Andy, you're not saying I approved of it, are you?
No.
No, he said other than.
No, it's not, no. I permit to what you talked there, that you're opposed to what went on here, Lawrence, that's what I'm implying.
We're opposed.
Or am I, am I right? You're opposed to what happened to the trophy. That's what I was.
It's been twenty-three years here, administrator, coach. We sure as heck earned to have them here.
Can I ask one question? Were there digital photographs taken of these trophies before they were destroyed?
I, no, I regret that that didn't work.
Yeah, that would give you other options there.
Well, we can work around that. That's what, so, I'm sorry to overstep my boundaries if I have, but we have totally went out of the realm of our general meeting. And what I mean by that is, we have not even talked about this agenda item. We have jumped to public comment. So, in order to get back to the agenda, we need to actually talk about this committee, and then we can take further board, or further, um, public comment. If you're okay with that, because they all wanna know what this agenda item means, and we haven't even discussed it.
Can I say one thing connected to what you talked about, the school being about the students? And I'm all about that, but when you have staff members who are posting pictures mocking this, that's inappropriate. And I think those staff members need to be held accountable. They're not here to defend themselves, but they put it out on Facebook, and it's wrong.
Because of that, I haven't seen it personally.
Well, it's, it's out there, and, and those teachers need to apologize to the public also.
Okay, Lee, I like the way you said we're pinned off, Jack, but we know we got a problem here, so we're here to come up with a remedy to fix. Let's get down to business, the former committee to. Anybody's got any ideas?
Generally, I agree.
That's kind of general practice.
And then, can we discuss right now, probably, what we think?
Yeah, we can decide on that.
I would just take, I would just take the letters and go through and just pick it over, because we could have no current people, we could have everybody.
Right, like we did before. So, what do you, you think, one more member for, one more member, one administration and four other? Well, I don't think we should, like you said, distinguish, it's just like with the co-op, we had a problem with having to designate somebody for that position. So designate their title, then it can just be open ended. If they're all end up being coaches that you select, then so be it. They all end up being committee members, then so be it. You know, because if you designate, and then what if somebody that doesn't fill that position, then what do we do? You know, it's like with the co-op we did with the new, and services last time.
I would just leave it open, there's no, the size of the committee, except letters and point next to it. So it depends on, on what. I think you might need a number of.
Yeah, just define the size.
So, one board member, one.
If it's too small, it's not good, or if you open big.
So, are, one more member, one admin, and then five, what's a seven board? Seven, four, two.
Nine, you know.
Seven, nine. So five is seven, but whatever the. One more, one admin, but. Depend on.
Is there, is there twenty minutes, is there a deadline for that line?
Yes.
It's gotta be a deadline for letters of interest for members. I don't know.
The next meeting is just one month.
It should be in forty hours before, I think, before her meeting.
Can you hear ya? Will you guys speak up?
So I would make, that's a line of over, I don't know, it's something that determines the timeline. If you say, make, say, two weeks, might not make.
Might not have enough.
Yeah.
So, a week before the board meeting?
Supposed to find that date.
December.
I need December fourth by, by grace of business.
What time do you leave on a Monday, returning? So December fourth, three thirty?
Three thirty-five.
I mean, I.
Larry, it depends.
Yeah, so what we've talked about is the logistics of our committee. Um, we will have, yeah.
I just, yeah, we'll have a Washington vote for repeat.
For repeat.
Yeah, what we're talking about.
We'll have potentially one board meeting, one board member, one admin, and between five and seven, others. Past, future, whatnot, and those will be submitted through letter of interests that want to be on this said committee. And we're just talking about deadlines as far as when letter of interest needs to be submitted in order for us to appoint that committee in a timely manner, which would be potentially next morning. Is that correct?
So I have a question. How are you gonna screen those? How are you gonna determine who's qualified more than another, another person to be qualified to sit on that committee?
That's, the letter of interest would be, hopefully.
A letter of interest does not qualify someone, no, as a, as, I mean. I've worked here for twenty years too. How do you determine whose, whose, whose information is gonna be better than somebody else's information? So if you don't have some kind of a screening, and like, you're gonna post a job and say, "These are the qualifications," how are you going to do that? Is a track coach gonna be more important than a wrestling coach? Or a basketball coach gonna be more important than a volleyball coach? How are you gonna determine what, what the screening process or the letters that you're going to accept?
I mean, that's kinda tough, because I mean, just like the, the board position, when you put a letter out, it's just four letters of interest. There's no screening, there's no criteria other than you're in that area of.
Then let's vote on it.
But there's just qualifications for a position when you apply.
When you guys form other committees, I mean, we want to do those, you guys form other committees and you have letters of interest for that. Who votes on the committee members?
The board does.
That's how, that's the precedence, that's the way you're going forward. So the board, the board will review those letters of interest and consider that.
All letters?
All letters, yeah, all letters. Uh, that's, that's the precedence that's been in the past, any other committee. Letters of interest come into the board by a certain deadline. The board has reviewed those letters of interest, those parties, and then is voted on as such. I mean, that's, like, why do we change from that now?
Why, I don't think I would want to mention. Can't, can't, should there be a criteria put in there though, that those that are, that are the most involved with the trophies that were taken down? Should, I guess, should be part of some, Lee, Tim, Tim and I, for example, here at the school, Jim's at the school, the three of us are right up here at the school.
Then we discriminate if we put a.
Well, you gotta, I, I, let's say you gotta, well, some of you, well, geez. It's affected us the most though, guys. That's, I think that, that, it's affected a lot of people, but when you're personally involved the most with those tro.
That makes it sound like you're not in favor of putting them back up.
That, that's not, that was, was stated here, the, the point is, is, someone in here, several of you said that, that you all have a voice because you're a taxpayer. So does everybody else. So everybody else should be allowed to submit a letter, to be a part of that committee, and then it will be decided who could be on that committee or not.
Who decides? Just the board?
That's.
Well, that's how committees are formed. I mean, generally, actually, our co-op committee, other than the community members, was appointed. There was no choice in the matter.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something about that? I, you know, I can see why that issue is divisive. You have to appoint a committee. Though I think one thing that you should take a vote on is whether that committee should also probably have a meeting where the public is invited to give their input into the decision. Because you can't have everybody in the community on the committee. You're, you're going to have to have a manageable committee, but if you, if the committee conducts itself in such a way to recognize all the interests that we have here in the community, I think, I think then, everybody's gonna be happier with the process. Because if the process, you can see where Mike feels very strongly, the people that are coaches should be on there. There are other people that have, who weren't coaches that do also have interest in it. But I think if that committee also has a public meeting, it would.
Well, generally, just like our co-op.
That's right. Our co-op, type of co-op.
Thank you.
It's open, it's a open meeting, but.
They will be noticed, so you will see those notices where we normally post our agenda.
And just so you know, the committee does not make the final decision, just like every other committee. The committee is formed to alleviate not being able to get through our set agenda. They are the ones that put the work into it and bring back generally a recommendation to the board. And then the board considers that recommendation. So it's not a committee that's gonna, just so everybody here knows, it's just like our co-op meeting, our co-op board, co-op committee, excuse me. They are not to make the final decision.
To me, it's like an advisory board, where they just advise, the community brings it to them, and then they grant you, and you make the final decision.
Yes.
They can bring us, basically a recommendation and.
So, so may I make a motion?
Make a motion, Larry.
Or do you want to?
Yeah, well, before we do that, so do we, do we wanna define what's the timeline, what that thing is? How does that need to be stated in a, in a public, no display, set date, for the, the chosen? I think that, the hard part is, I think maybe once it's appointed, then decide the timeframe, because I mean. No, I just wanna know that before we make that motion, that would really need to be an expert. No, I, I would say probably once the committee is appointed, our recommendation would be to set that timeframe from that appointment. Uh, meetings or possible solution, and then go for that. So if there is a time figure, meetings or things like that. All right, so I make a, I make a motion to form, start the process of forming a committee for the trophy committee that will give the public opportunity to submit letters, letters of interest by December fourth, by three thirty to the office. And that's December fourth by three thirty, and then that committee will be selected by the board on December eleventh. Uh, and then the direction of that committee will be given, you know, proceed from there, yeah, so.
And.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So on that, on that committee, there'll be one board member, one administrator, and then five to seven other parties interested, depending on the number of applications and those interested parties.
Did you get that, Charlie?
I didn't understand the, your second sentence, I, you said, you start the forming of the trophy wall committee. I'm not sure what you said. The committee will be delegated by the board, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot.
No, I can read it back to you and let me know if this is, Sutter made a motion to start the forming of the trophy wall committee. The committee will be delegated by the board. The committee will be comprised of one board member, one administration, and five to seven others to be on the committee, depending on public interest. Letters need to be submitted by Monday, December fourth, by three thirty-five, and to the district clerk of term of public schools. The committee, meetings will be noticed up like all other school board meetings, so the public knows when they are happening. The committee will bring back to the board the recommendation on what should happen with the trophies, and the board will make the final decision.
Now, did you, uh.
Do you want me to draw?
No, just put December. December eleventh with the next.
I'll pick one of the next.
I second that motion.
The first and second is to form a committee to handle a trophy situation. Is there any public comment?
What do you, what do you mean the situation? Whether to decide to put them back together, buy new ones? That'll be the recommendation?
Recommendation.
I'm pretty sure you don't have to have a committee to decide, people probably wanna put them back together or buy new ones. Pretty quick committee meeting. I mean, I don't think people wanna leave it like it is.
I'm sure there'll be more people who want to have input than what's here tonight, guarantee you. So we'll see, that's why we're forming a committee to.
That's what's on the agenda, so we have to move forward with that.
But I think that, that the committee should be, you know, directed that they're a committee to replace and repair these trophies. That should be their job.
Or do you get, or is the board, I feel, we should replace them?
That's, you know, there's, as presented tonight, there's several options. And so I think that's why the committee being formed will determine what is most effective.
And I think part of it is looking back to see what more trophies are there, what's not there. I mean, I, I have no idea if it's all there, and. But then, as a word begin to see what is left and not left.
Because there is, there's, there's several, lots more than was not on the volleyball, that we need to represent as well. And so I think that's what Brian's objective was, was to get every piece of memory as far as sports go displayed. every piece of memory as far as work to go displayed, and
There, there's still trophies, I mean, there's trophies in boxes, there's trophies wrapped in plastic. There's trophies wrapped in plastic, there's, there's not, not everything's being properly represented. And, and again, to echo Andy, you know, I don't, I don't believe that the intention here was any ill will or, um, to offend anyone, so, you know, we're trying to
Can we get them replaced or?
Emily?
Will the administrative representative and the board representative, that you decided that they'd be somewhere other community as well? And that will be appointed by the board?
Todd? I just wanted to say with, with what Karen read to me, I don't know if you have a choice. The statutes of the laws and destroying property, I don't know if you have such a choice, to be honest, I, I would look into that. And, and I agree, I don't think anyone did anything here to, to, to be mean or to do it, but it's done, and I think the consensus is, everyone wants these trophies replaced. What you said and what I've heard on the street are totally different, I, I, it's all been bad.
We've got quite a few letters here, I can read there, total options of what most of the bodies
But, but what she's, but what she read tonight, and what I've heard what she read, I don't know if you have a choice in this matter.